... the late of April. That will be our first place. By the way.
Hi. To the public, for the parents, for the nation, from your God, and your people, we believe in my best.
First, any comments? Any member of the public come up with anything to comment? Good for yourself. By the way, before the board, that's my team. I'd like to just talk before the funds. I am going to have to put on a costume.
Hi.
I didn't see any for me. After what you need numbers, I acquired. This district who has signed some of the things.
Thank you. I'm heading to committee update and board comments.
Judy, Judy, um, we have. I shared a lot about, um, coming to conference and how we're getting through ways, kind of like their attendance. And then to, um, work it on and discuss development, because we've been a lot of different, um, stuff. You know, and, um, they just, um, he shares the characters you do on the last. That's what I'm saying. And then there's like, um, that's what I'm saying.
We had the policy meeting literally right before this meeting. Um, and we talked about, uh, several policies relating to extracurricular, club days, athletic, uh, eligibility. Um, and those, I believe, are probably before the board and with the next couple meetings.
All right, I just wanted to thank the Department of Public Works for, again, troubling us out. They do that after their long night of the nursery works. We really appreciate it. Also, there was a jump rope show recently at elementary school. I was looking up, uh, fancy with Sean and, uh, Nancy Millers. One, two, and, uh, or K one, K one. And PE, I know PE, but K one. One, two, it is one, two, okay. Nancy, but both Nancy Millers were there as well as several other, uh, parent educators and, uh, I think the nurse were in there. And it's an amazing show that they've been doing for years. I don't know how many of you find the energy or nurses, but, uh, it was great to see them. There was, that's probably 300 people there. It was amazing. Um, and then also I just wanted to mention that during the election, um, we do have that board coverage during the day. As those have been on the board now, and then at the end of the evening at seven o'clock when you do the voting, or the, excuse me, tally of the votes. Uh, every member of the board is here, so we'll set up the schedule and, um, and, uh. And that was it for me. All right, we head right into, uh, student representative for Olivia Blackett.
Yeah, so not too much tonight, but for sports, girls basketball, they have a game versus PCA Monday, and they won 58 to 44. They have a game this Friday home against Farmington at eight, at 5:30. Game next Monday, which will be the last regular season game versus Holy Family. Um, they're currently the fourth seed. And then for boys basketball, they have a game versus PCA as well, and they all, they lost 47 to 55. They have a game Friday against Farmington at seven. Game next Monday versus Holy Family, which will also be their last regular season game. And they're a fourth seed as well, I believe. Unified basketball, they finished their season with a four to one record, and they had an overall really good season, and it was great to, for their home game where everyone showed out and showed their support for them. Swim, they have a state meet at UNH on Saturday. And then for hockey, they lost one to two versus Bishop Valley on Wednesday. Um, they also lost three to nine versus Alveron yesterday. And then for coming up games, we have one Saturday at 6:50 versus Timberlane. And then we also play Winnicott next Monday at five. Indoor track had their state meet last Saturday, and I'll give a shout out to Ailis for breaking her own school record by 17 seconds in the 3K, but she also placed second in. She will also be moving on to MOCs in a few weeks, and then she was also just announced as D2 Allstate. For clubs, um, Net Zero, their last meeting, they painted rocks and put kindness and environmental messages on them. Um, Student Council is currently selling candy grams for Valentine's Day. Um, Band is still working on their Chocolate Fest, which will have desserts and chocolate in the music hallway, and different groups will be around playing and singing. And that's all February 19th. And then for Salt, um, we are also still planning the Parents Night Out, and we set the date for that, which will be March 14th. And the signups will be going out soon. And then also a few weeks ago, some members went to a leadership conference in Concord. Um, Amaya and Brennan are here to speak about their experience and some takeaways, so raise some one up.
Yeah, probably. We don't know what we're doing here. It's pretty similar to tonight. Yeah, perfect.
Um, hello, I'm Amaya, President of Salt. Um, so a couple, or last month, we went to a mission conference at the Concord, um, at, um, insurance, it's all insurance. Yeah, insurance, um, based on our schools. Um, so we went there, there was like five of us, um, and a bunch of others were there on the area, um, all met up together. The takeaways we have for the meeting were starting awareness to everyone not just updates, so like to prepare yourself, um, whether that's like sleep or mental health. Um, so we wanted to think what we're got, and Salt was planning on making a presentation for like self-care, um, taking care of yourself. And we're going to present it to the middle schoolers during their wake walk, they have like a 15 minute walk, um, every day for like study lattes, like three times. So we're just going to follow those, um, twin walks in, and then also doing the subway as well, just because, um, everyone would do it there at the same time. So, um, that'll be probably like a mission to show everybody. Um, and then for school culture, we just want to encourage. We just do, um, all sit together at the basketball games, um, sometimes like the little ones will sit like away, and then like our cheering will kind of like spread out. So we wanted to encourage like it's okay if you come to the bus, not like be divided, then, um, we're all in the same community, so, um, just bring them together, um, with the high scores. And just not to be scared to like, um.
I don't think it's you.
Um, not being very close. Sometimes people, it's like they're like embarrassed, they're like cheer, or like, um, they're like just supporting each other. Um, so we just want to spread out a little bit, and just tell people like it's okay, but like, be, uh, be totally needed and, uh, this door, um, separate from you. So we just want that everything to be better, um, and just don't be embarrassed on what you say and how you say it, like, um, yeah, just want to show you the support.
Actually, can I ask, uh, Amaya, do you know what happened to the mural on the wall behind the student section in the gym?
See, when we're doing like painting and different renovations, they painted over the gym walls, um, just because the stable looked a little bit outdated. Um, the plan was to create like a new one and have like some of these students design something, but, um, I'm not sure if we ever got in contact with anyone to do that. And we wanted to put like stencil words, um, that like kind of just like represent like, um, respect, leadership, kids like that have those come up, but I guess it's just that about to that. But, um, I could also communicate about that, and maybe have a connection with Mr. Riley and get that going.
Yeah, I know a guy who could probably help me out too. We could put in a little plug for you.
Hey, you need.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
From, I also mentioned the Salt Conference, and one of the, like, kind of quotes or ideas that came up was, uh, the thermostat, uh, the water, kind of things like, don't just read the change, but don't be the opposite of the school. Help change the problems. So, uh, for athletics, those problems we've been having is getting enough fans to go to games. So, uh, we're trying to increase our band base, so we're having, uh, athletes as well support the other clubs in our schools, so going to chorus concerts, band concerts, drama club, supporting all departments so that they turn into supporters of our school activities. So we're really just trying to improve social awareness and support.
Oh, that's great. Everybody have any questions? Thank you both for, uh, representing us in Concord and all the work you do on Salt. I know it's a lot of extra work in addition to your school day and your homework load, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we're lucky to have, um, Principal Pine here to introduce, um, our fifth grade student council representatives.
Good evening, how are you? Uh, I'm honored to be able to have two of our student ambassadors. The student ambassador program was started this, uh, fall by Miss Bosson, who, uh, is writing the program with the fifth graders. Uh, they came up with the mission statement. The mission is student ambassadors at Newmarket Elementary School will work actively, to promote, organize, and exercise activities that encourage student pride and school spirit. Some of the responsibilities of the student ambassadors are, they meet twice a month during their recess and plan activities aimed at promoting school values of respect, responsibility, and teamwork. They help organize and support activities that both promote school spirit and give back to the community. As an ambassador, students are responsible for reading boarding announcements, which includes leading the political leaders, announcing judge choices, and reading other notices. In addition, teachers may sign up to have student ambassadors visit their classrooms and help with activities or reach towards the other grades. We're fortunate to have two wonderful student ambassadors here. We have Randy Delorge, they're going to, in, in Brimstone, they're going to talk a little bit about what we do here at Newmarket Elementary School, since it's a conference.
Maybe the other mic might be, yeah.
Say the mic.
As soon as ambassador, it will be comfortable reading, learning, and answering. They will also be willing to help raise and build a flag. They are willing to listen to others' ideas respectfully. Good role models to the peers through their behavior and effort, organized and responsible, willing to meet during their recess, and well-prepared to respect, to respectfully reach out to their teacher to get assignments and board notes that are missed while the willing ambassadors are good. Activities we have done this winter. Number one, boarding. Number two, breakfast. Office deliveries. We read books to younger students. Number four, we collect money to support the Exeter area charitable foundation. Number five, we help younger students with a craft. Number six, we help with the multicultural dinner. Number seven, we help younger students with supplies to their unified arts classes. Number eight, we help with Monday's theme all school assemblies.
Wow, it sounds like a lot of responsibility. Is it funding student ambassadors? Is it, do you have funding student ambassadors? It sounds like a lot of work, yeah? It's great. Must be nice to learn what's on the lunch menu before everybody else does, I'm sure.
What actually you think that we're waiting, every month we gather, we definitely have a school, like, 70, uh, just so the basket has now taken a active role in that as well. So they've, uh, got a minimum number of people in the school to, uh, so if you're going to help this basket, we see if it matters back to a certain percentage of people in the board in a little bit.
Thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, and now we have, sorry to say, Todd, the superintendent report. Good luck with that.
Actually, I did want to just comment, I, I hope to have the fifth grade student ambassadors back later in the year too. Just kind of give us ongoing update, and I'd love to have this become a regular, three, three times a year, just have students come in and share what's going on. I think it's wonderful, so thank you, Sean. I want to start my report by just sharing a video that we have been working on, uh, to promote budget development. Not anywhere near as exciting as the students have it here, but I think it's a well-done video, I thought I'd start by sharing it with you. And this, by the way, will be on our website Saturday, tomorrow, and we'll be pushing it out on social media, so.
At Newmarket School District, we're committed to the highest standards of quality education. Nothing reflects that more than the choices we make in our annual budget. This video will share each of the warrant articles will be presenting to voters for approval on March 11th. The FY26 Proposed Budget for Newmarket School District. The Proposed Newmarket Teachers Association Contract. A Contribution to the School District Capital Reserve Fund. And a Contribution to our Special Education Trust Fund. Warrant Article Two is Newmarket School District's Proposed Operating Budget. Our budget in Newmarket puts our students and their growth at the center of every choice we make. And commits to the growth plans each of our schools have put in place. It also controls rising costs. We met a challenge to keep expenses at no more than a 2% increase. In a year where we understood we would also be asking voters to approve a new teacher contract. This rate of increase is significantly lower than the rate of inflation in the past year. We did it by reducing about two and a half full-time equivalent positions, saving money on healthcare plan changes, and renegotiating service contracts. Our proposed budget is about $28.3 million. About $50,000 above the default budget set by New Hampshire State Law. If voters approve, it will result in an increase of 62 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Or 3 cents more than the default budget. Both the School Board and Budget Committee unanimously recommend approval of this article. Warrant Articles Three and Four are the Proposed Newmarket Teachers Association Contract. We've negotiated a new four-year agreement with our more than 100 highly skilled educators, who deliver an excellent education to our students. The new contract provides a 3% cost of living adjustment to all covered employees. It encourages our teachers to continue their professional growth, to grow their experience and benefit our students by offering opportunities to step up their salary tracks and steps. It achieves significant savings through the adoption of a new healthcare plan. And it promotes collaborative engagement between our district and our teachers, many of whom don't just work in Newmarket, but live and send their children to our schools. If approved, the contract would appropriate roughly $700,000 in each of the next three years, before declining to about $509,000 in year four of the contract. The estimated tax impact of this article is 41 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And both the School Board and Budget Committee unanimously recommend approval of this article. If the new contract is not approved in Article Three, Article Four in the warrant asks for voters' approval to call a special meeting to address the issue. Warrant Article Five keeps Newmarket's commitment to our previously adopted 20-year maintenance plan. Capital improvement is a key goal of our budget development, which will keep our facilities at the cutting edge for our students while managing our long-term expenses. If approved, we would contribute $200,000 of unused year-end funds in our budget this year to the school district's capital reserve fund. This money helps us plan ahead for long-term capital improvement needs. It's also the fund that will pay for completing the window project at Newmarket Elementary School and the new roof at Newmarket Junior Senior High School this summer. Because these are unused year-end funds, this transfer has no impact on the tax rate. Both the School Board and Budget Committee unanimously recommend approval of this article. Warrant Article Six seeks to reinforce Newmarket's Special Education Trust Fund. This is money our district sets aside for when one of our students requires educational accommodations outside of our district. This out-of-district tuition can be difficult to anticipate, which is why we have about $358,000 set aside in the trust fund. We're asking voters to approve moving $65,000 in unused funds from this year's budget to the trust fund. To bring the fund balance up to about $425,000, which is the approximate cost of one low, one middle, and one high-end out-of-district placement. It's how we can protect future budgets against unanticipated special education costs, while ensuring a high-quality education for every Newmarket student. Because these are unused year-end funds, this transfer has no impact on the tax rate. Both the School Board and Budget Committee unanimously recommend approval of this article. You can dig into every detail of each of these warrant articles on our website, newmarket.k12.nh.us. Navigate to the School Board tab at the top of the homepage, then select School Election and Budget Information.
And so that, that video, I know it's not as exciting as the accomplishments of our students, but it is informing our community and getting out there so that the community can know. It's also, we wrote it down in this smaller segments, so we can push out a video about Article Two, Article Three, Four, and so forth. So hopefully it will help us better communicate with the community. And I already talked to Jim, who's going to help us push it out on all the different social media sites starting tomorrow. So hopefully this will be up for the community to see, just basically giving some basic facts about, about the upcoming budget. So anyway, that's the first thing I wanted to share. I need to un-share my screen, hold on. Uh, so a couple of other things I wanted to mention, um.
It's a good idea.
Camera, please. I, I did want to mention a couple of things. One of the things that, um, here with me, I need to get to my notes.
Maybe you want to hang up the call.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. You guys don't want to see my face, right? Okay. So, uh, a couple of other things I wanted to mention, people have probably heard an awful lot about information coming out of Washington DC. Uh, executive orders coming from the White House, of all kinds of things, ranging from things to do with Title IX, which is about, um, civil rights and protection of student rights. In addition to, um, there's actually talk about the elimination of the federal Department of Education coming out of, uh, Washington DC. I bring that up not because I have solutions, but I want to, I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of uncertainty out there in the political landscape right now. Uh, one of the things I, I want a board and I want the community to understand is that if the Department of Ed were to go away, uh, we'd have close to half a million dollars in federal funds that fund many things from, uh, student services to professional development to many other activities that we engage in. Um, and so it'd be too important people understand that there's very much a, a climate out there that's a little uncertain. We are monitoring it, and we're doing everything we can to, um, to protect, um, Newmarket and Newmarket schools. But as we head into next year, it's important we recognize the vast challenges out there. Um, Ed Policy tonight, we did spend some time talking about, uh, we've got a pretty dramatic shift in some of the federal line, uh, policies. Some of you may recall, last year, we spent actually most of the first six months of this school year revising our federal line policies and, and, uh, aligning them with the rules that came out of the Biden administration last summer. Those rules have been reversed, and so we now are going to undertake the process of bringing our policies in line to that. So I just, I just want people to know that. The one thing I, I just want to emphasize though, um, is the Newmarket school system will always err on the side of protecting vulnerable students, no matter what. I'll leave it at that. Um, it's, it's really very frustrating on, since I can't, um, stop coming out of, out of the, uh, out of our government. On that similar theme, I may have seen there's an article in, uh, Foster's yesterday, talking about enforcement school system and guidance that they were giving to their administrative team around how to deal with, um, Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement Agency. And whether or not that's the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, ICE. Um, one of the things that is going on in the country is there are, um, there's a lot of talk about illegal immigrants and, and things of that sort. And, um, it does raise a lot of issues for public schools. Uh, I do want to tell you once again, I have a great relationship with the Newmarket Police Department. It is, is so important in, in dealing with this. On Tuesday, I invited Chief Jordan, his team, to come to our leadership team to allow us to just talk through what the current law, what the current direction, uh, things are going, in hopes that as a school system, we can develop protocols. And again, as I said before, the one thing I will say over and over again is, we will protect vulnerable students and families. And I, and I will hand you that.
Yeah. Who knows? Uh, here you are, right? I think we all agree 100% with you. I appreciate your firm stance on that. Does anyone have any questions for Todd? Anyone concerned the video's not quite as good as Todd and I, being on, it's really great video. It gets, uh, very clear, uh, good message to some of that.
It does address one of the goals the board set for itself, to identify different ways to communicate. This is another, another method.
Are we going to, are we going to track views and stuff like that?
We certainly can when we put it out.
Unless it's like, yeah.
Thank you very much. Head right into our discussion items. First up, we are fortunate enough to have, uh, STEAM teacher Laura Bascom here, with Principal Pine to do a presentation for us.
Seems like the audience can't hear us very well.
I think they're just not interested.
Hand signals. Maybe we shouldn't mumble as much, other than.
It could be. If it was just me, they can't.
Just you, just.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
That's all right, I'm used to it.
Sorry, I'm trying to remember, I'm kind of locked out using, um, sharing my screen. I can't read.
This is the one that. Modern problems require modern solutions.
I actually have something I'm going to pass out in a moment. I'm trying to get this to.
Sean, do you, do you mind kind of add, let me give you us a quick, uh, one-minute intro about Laura and Laura and.
Well, she's.
I'm going to actually pass something out, bud.
All right, uh, earlier, a few board meetings back, I believe you heard, as heard from the technology, uh, people here at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School. Uh, Lauren is here to, Laura Bascom, who is our technology, uh, teacher at the elementary school, has been with us how many years now? Almost 10 years. Uh, she has really brought a lot of interesting and innovative ideas into our technology and, uh, and computer programming. Uh, she's going to take an opportunity tonight to share with you the sort of things that kids from kindergarten up to fifth grader are doing. And, uh, hopefully that will build upon as they move up into the middle school and the high school as well. So, um, thank you very much for being here, Lauren, and I'll let you pass things out if I can help you.
Very much like manipulatives. So I have a bunch of student projects here. And the student projects and student activities that we use. I figured it would be really nice if you could turn that, if you could actually like, okay. That's probably the teacher in me. And that's how to be too, okay. Um, so my name's Laura Bascom. I have been at Newmarket Elementary for almost 10 years. It's a great school to be a part of. Um, I'm the technology teacher. Uh, so we're listing STEM up there, but I underline technology, um, because that is the primary goal of our class. Um, STEAM at Newmarket Elementary School is very much incorporated into all of the classrooms, um, the general classroom, as well as Unified Arts. Uh, it's typically problem and project-based activities, especially in my classroom. We try to make it very hands-on, creative, innovative, active, fun, keep the kids having fun here. There goes. Um, technology class is very much experience-based. So one of my main goals is that technology is a tool for learning, um, creation, task simplification, um, entertainment's just one of its uses. We live in a world where a lot of our students are considered digital natives, um, but they're very much, um, still learning, just like we are. And things are changing just as fast for them as it was for us growing up. So they, they've gone from. So they've gone from not having AI to a world of AI, for example. And that's a big change that even they're experiencing that we had to kind of go through as well. I see my students 45 minutes once a week, and it's one of their UA classes, Unified Arts. I see kindergarten from fifth grade. We cover in technology class digital literacy, digital citizenship, and computer science. So I put a little bit there. It's covering things like internet safety, how computers work, coding, cybersecurity, and so forth. One of my big ideas for our class is just inspiring the kids. So like the wow, I didn't know it could do that. This book is one that I'm going to be using soon with my fifth graders. It is Beauty and the Beak, and it's incredible story about an eagle that loses its beak. So I challenged the kids, we look at it and stuff, what could we do using technology, using our resources to help that bird? So then we look at what you actually can do. 3D printers can 3D print that bird a beak, and they did. And then the last thing we kind of look at is, okay, but should I do that? Something like that is amazing. You look at that bird and you're like, wow, this is a symbol of our country and we just helped that bird. Sometimes looking at AI, maybe it's like, wow, maybe I should rethink using AI to try and do this assignment or something. So it's an opportunity to really talk about all those different things that are so powerful with technology that we sometimes forget. It's kind of small, but this is the list of all my different kind of like goals in kindergarten through second grade. Since I see sixth grades, I didn't kind of put everything up there. You would have a ton of stuff on there, but I did pull out some highlights. So mouse skills and navigation practice is huge with our younger kids. You'd be amazed how many kids come into my classroom and poke the screen or talk into their mouse or something like that. But we start with that. There's intro to typing, applications, all the basic digital literacy things. One of my favorite things to do are what I call build-in type activities. In those little folders, you can see a couple of these activities where they basically, they use graphic design skills to design a picture of some kind. And then different grades have to type different portions of it. Teaching them typing, but in a more practical manner than just like a typing tutorial. There's a couple kiddos that get so into it, those three girls in there, they're, I think they're all second graders, the middle one might be first grader, trying to remember. But they went so crazy, they had, then they went on with their fonts, they had like five sentences on one of them, it was so fun. If you look, one of the other ones that's super fun is the human robot games in the corner, there's like a hopscotch thing. We just finished that, and they, that was so fun talking to them about like, okay, well, if you're a robot, you can't do something without getting directions. What happens if they give you the wrong directions? And they're like, you glitch! And then of course, some kids have to glitch, which is so much fun talking to them about that, and we discuss it and stuff, it's a blast. Moving on from that, I actually heard one of the mice turn on the little mice robots, and we have these new Dash robots, which they're bigger, so I didn't bring one. That's what they're doing right now. So we go from, okay, well, as a person robot, a human robot, what directions do I know? To, okay, well, now I have a robot in my hand, what do I have to do to help this robot get to its goal, to the cheese, because it's a mess? So that's fun, lots of fun. But younger kids also do 3D design. You look at the little one that says Mason on that picture, and in your boxes, there's a few others. Mason made that this year. He doesn't have it yet because I held on to it, but Mason made that. It's about probably three inches big. He designed, he did not have my help. He designed it, he printed it. Well, I hit print because otherwise I'd be scared. But he made that, which is super cool to see these kids that are like kindergartners using a technology like 3D design. That is incredible. And then we talk a little bit about the history of computers and so much more. Couldn't fit it all in there. So again, here's my third group, fifth grade. Like I said, it's kind of a long list. I will highlight the two that are highlighted on there. With artificial intelligence becoming such a big thing, I'm so excited that there is a group working to make a plan, policy for our school. They do that, don't worry. But I'm so excited for that because once that policy is in place, I'm hoping to build out what we should do, KFI, to work with our students and help them understand how they can use and leverage the AI technology, but also its drawbacks and how we can be safe and ethically use it, responsibly use it. And then I also highlighted cybersecurity, that's one of my, I guess you'd say kind of passion type things, I'm trying to learn a lot more about cybersecurity. This year, we played a card game to kind of illustrate it in some of my grades, but it's a very important thing that is really impacting all of us. And that's one of those things where I think that you can talk to a student, a child who's like, okay, well, they're a digital native, they know not to do this. Some of them don't, no, don't click down. On some devices, it doesn't look like you're down. So being able to talk to them about that and help them learn that, that's another kind of area I'm trying to grow and learn in myself, so I can help the kids grow. Skip to their highlights because it's a lot easier to look at highlights than my big log list. One of my favorite activities is when third grade does their immigration project, which they just kind of wrapping up now. We talk about like, how can you use Google technology to help you explore a new country? We visit some of the landmarks in different countries on Google Maps, as well as using Google Translate to translate different phrases before their immigration simulation to help them during the simulation. I don't know how many of them use it, they certainly come up to me and try and challenge me and say, well, don't you know what I just said? And it's like, I don't speak Polish. I'm not Google Translate yet. Trust me, they came up to me and wanted, they said, I can't even pronounce it, D I D U, or something like that, and they wanted me to know what it meant. It's like, you know? But it is super fun. We always plan some type of project afterwards. So this year, they use that information to make brochures, which I did put a few of those brochures in there. We do use robotics encoding, we haven't yet, which they have been telling me every time they come into my classroom right now, whenever we started robots. But, so the younger kids, third grade, second grade, are using those Dash robots that are brand new. And fourth and fifth just wrapped up using the Edison's, which you can see the little golfing course there. He had to design his golf course. So there's that STEAM part where you're kind of like thinking about how does this work? What do I have to do to solve this task? He had to design it, and then he had to program his robot to push the ball into the cup, which he did amazing with. We had all of the different students using them. They get right down on the floor, playing with them, setting them up, getting it set up, and planning out what their code will be. And then in the bottom right corner, you can see there's a line tracking tool with those little Edison robots. And that's something that with that little extra time a student had, he just was like, you know what, I'm going to try and figure out how this works. So he finished his golf course, and next thing I know, he's like, where's Bascom? Come see this, I had five minutes extra, this is what I did. And I was like, that is what we want to see from our students. And then at the very bottom are the microbits. I think they're in the high school too, or middle school STEAM class, but not positive. But they're a little tiny microcomputer, and that student made a pedometer with them. We haven't used them yet in fifth grade, so that was last year. But they, you can use them to make pedometers, we talk about sensors and all of those features of robotics and technology with that. So like I said, cybersecurity is one of my kind of things I'm starting to build up. So that's that card game we were trying. I haven't done it yet this year, but we take apart a computer, talk to the kids about how computers work. That student, he, first time he used a screwdriver, I think. But we take apart the computer, and then we get into the 3D design and the printing, custom shapes, and different things like that, jewelry. Couple of the boxes that I passed out have some earrings that a student made, a couple students made last year. One of my favorite things we did this year was, a need was shared across the school, asking for large, like six-inch 3D shapes for a geometry class for a student with special needs. And my brain was like, okay, we have a 3D printer. So I talked with a fifth grader, and he took the specs, so he knew six inches, turned it into millimeters, and we had him design, I think with six different shapes, however many shapes are in that picture, and we printed them and gave them to that student. And now he has these manipulatives he can hold and use for his geometry unit, which was super fun. Of course, everybody, when they saw the football field in my room, freaked out. So that was super, super popular as well. So I know that for some of you might kind of thinking, well, where do you go from here? What things are kind of coming up that you're thinking about? I kind of already alluded to that, looking at artificial intelligence and cybersecurity, kind of building those out. Looking forward to continuing to grow the vintage tech collection. I'm sorry if I make anybody feel old, but the phone books.
Just hand this out to the other students and they can look through and see what it is.
I'm looking forward to talking to them about that. We use cameras, we've already talked about the cameras. Phone books and stuff are coming out after vacation, but it's a great opportunity. Just this week, we were talking about storage and how way back in, I think it was the 50s or whatever, techno, like our programs were on punch cards. So the biggest program was on 62,000 punch cards, and we talked with them, I talked with them, they were like, well, what if the wind blew? And it's like, yeah, that was a real, real thing. You had to worry about that. So it kind of gives them a different appreciation of our current technology, and it gives them an opportunity to think like, wow, if that's changed, what can change in the future? I recently went to a workshop that introduced me to this walking classroom idea. So that's kind of on the horizon. It's something I'm looking into, where you give kids a podcast, like a little MP3 player of some kind, and a podcast, and they can go for a walk and kind of learn at the same time, building that like kinesthetic, the nature, maybe like, all of those things pulling it together. And I love the idea of doing it where the kids start making podcasts too. It's not something I've dug before, so it's like on the first starts of figuring out, but it's a cool idea that was shared. And then I just added virtual reality and programmable drones because they're both up-and-coming tech, or already here technologies, I think that would be the better word, and adding opportunities for our kids is something that's a really important thing. So, she's probably, they're probably like cringing, but my two student ambassadors here that were able to come, I had a list of four, but because of the delay, the cancellation last week, I think they couldn't all come. I wanted to show off a little bit of their work. So if you look, the little circle shape, that is Bryn's golf course, I don't remember with her partner. And then Frankie's little snowman project that she did, that was one of her build-in types. So they had to design, and that one was very involved because they had to take in copy and paste a lot of designs and stuff. And I thought the two girls would come up because now we're on like a questions, and I would love questions, you can ask any of us, any of the detailed things that you're interested in, like Laura.
So what was the hardest part about creating that snowman and coming up with the ideas to put in the text boxes?
Well, I don't know, there's a lot of changes that you started, and a part, I just didn't put the shape of paper, and I didn't really get it.
I overwhelmed them, I think, because there had to have been like 500 of our pieces to pick from and where.
That's amazing. Can they answer any questions?
I'm just curious, and not specifically related to technology, so show of hands, Olivia, you're in this too. How many people remember whether they made it through Ellis Island, USA, which I'll parade? No, I'm not asking whether you made it or not, do you remember whether you made it or not?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be indicated by... Just curious, I find it sticks with people.
That was incredible this year because I third grade immediately after it, and I asked them questions, stuff like how did it go? One kid was in first class that, oh, we got cupcakes for snack. You should have seen all of the other faces. They were like, how dare you get cupcakes? Because I guess they did not get cupcakes at any of the other classes. It was hilarious, and I do think it's quite the experience for them. If you had to pick your favorite STEAM or technology activity, what would it be in any grade level? If you have all three?
I'd obviously choose that.
That's these ones?
And it's just fun to work with my friend.
You don't, I don't want to... I guess you're giving me a lot of ideas. What about you?
I agree, because when we used the Edison robots, we got to like have them draw like by themselves as long as we operated it, and yeah.
Amazing.
That the idea is to eventually have those be walls they can build, because that's one challenge with like snow plowing, that was the very first little Edison picture up there. I had a box with pompoms, which is your snow. Problem is, it's the first time I did it, pompoms were everywhere. So let's build walls so that the pompom can go everywhere. But they're helping me, the kids are having fun.
Great, thank you so much. Nice one, question please.
Are there anything, like any of the topics that you've studied over the course of the years so far that you're like, I really want to learn more about that when I get to the next level? That really just interested you?
Do you like, so you like playing with the robots more or making pictures?
Something you want to do more.
What did you like to do most?
3D printing.
A little jealous of that.
I did want to share, when you mentioned the walking classroom idea, there's a committee that is actually formed by the PTA, really trying to look at outdoor learning experiences and find ways to provide more outdoor time for kids and more...
It lines up perfectly.
Perfectly aligned, and what they're talking about, you can get outside and learn and kind of make your own pace, really neat. And I do also want to just say, over the last month, we had the Stephanie Clary here to share kind of what happened at the June Senior High, and tonight we had the elementary school. It is so clear that the continuum of technology opportunities for our students is so incredibly rich and exciting, and the stuff they're doing, it's amazing. Thank you for all your work, it's amazing.
We didn't manage to make the less overtly exciting, engaging activities, and we have to teach at a certain level, internet safety, and it's never my favorite thing to teach, but now I'm actually really excited that I'm going to research part of it, because I think that's, you know, they have to learn those things, but there's still much more to learn than how I'm doing.
My work, we get phishing tests all the time, we have people sending emails, so maybe you could do that, I could be like, click it. Long choice. Yeah, there you go. Well, thank you very much again for coming, we really appreciate it, and we hope to see you in the future.
Thank you for coming back a week later after the snow days. I know that really messed things up, but thank you for being here.
We appreciate it. You may want to inventory that box.
We made some of these. That was fun.
That's okay, we'll get that.
It happens every day. Literally every day.
Bonnie, you put everything back?
I know, it's like teetering.
Great. All right. An equally exciting next discussion topic is diagnostics of data and math reading. A38 with I ready.
I guess this one, this is a really hard act to follow, I just was like, congratulations, thank you, our students, great. So I am... Sharing my screen from here.
Just relax, take it down.
I think next week, dress rehearsals, I'm here before.
While Caddy is hooked up, I would want to mention... Hooked up, I would want to mention, next week, we will, we can move into the library. They're doing setup of the lights of a show. And so they have a technician coming in to do that. Just seeing all the wall. In the library.
Wait, I want to share my screen. Real good.
Oh. Just double click on it.
I know, I feel, but it's sending it.
That's what I see down there.
No, I keep down.
To share about that. I want to share with you. Right? So I would have.
Still doesn't work. Be easier for you here. Patty, I think Todd can share it if you need to.
Trying to drag and join us on my computer, Patty.
Patty, I think Todd's going to share it and we can just.
Empty too.
Oh, I have confidence. Yeah. We'll do it last time. Technology is nothing good to us today. Oh, did you not, did you not, you're going to PowerPoint?
Yeah, well, let's put it down.
Should be able to share window. Go back to the meeting.
This never happened.
Back to the meeting. Yep, there goes, and then it's like PowerPoint.
Any high schoolers?
Chair.
I asked, I asked her assistant. I don't know if it's because it's a math.
Here we go.
There you go.
Easy peasy. Not like I do it every day. Problem was, when we were walking in, Todd said this was going to correct me. Soon as he said that, I'm like, eh, no. I left house and it's, it's going to be a long meeting. We're doing. Yeah. Can't say it.
Let's turn this camera.
Close the slider.
I can't keep what my parents kill with them with this.
Is your present not working? Yeah, it doesn't work for me. It didn't present much. So I'm just doing it.
Visit your computer.
Yeah.
You can, she's going, we should all be able to open it and just kind of just present probably clearly as a technical question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a few slides to just give you a progress update of the diagnostic growth reports. And. So the first slide, I start with the elementary school. And as you know, we use iReady for benchmark data, data visual reading and math. So the students had, took the test in September and then again in late January, early February for our kindergarten students. And as you can see, for every grade level, K five, we look through the winter, so that green color, I guess, going down for each grade level, you can see the dramatic growth that students made. So for example, for the mid to above grade level, for our kindergarten students to, in the fall, have 14 students at mid or above kindergarten level to now 44% of our kindergartners are scoring at that mid to above grade level. Or to even see when we had kindergartners, 55% of our students were one grade level below, that's really all you can go with our kindergarten students. And then to go from 55% to 25%, that's just amazing growth and want to really be celebrated and recognized. And if you look down for every grade level, you see that trajectory of growth. And again, I always like to say, it's not about perfection, it's about are we making progress? So when we look at these reading scores, we are clearly making progress and we're going in the right direction, K five, which is really exciting. The next slide is, I'm sorry, any questions for reading?
I was just going to say, first grade.
Yay!
You know, is amazing. That's, that's the grade where they really start reading.
And I just want to speak to our first grade class because our first grade last year, when they were kindergartners, we were all taken by surprise, the number of kindergartners who registered from the initial spring registration to it is our largest class in the school. I think we're up to 86, 87 students in, in grade one. And it's a very big class. So of course, we, obviously we have more teachers, which, you know, we'll have to have more teachers in second grade for next year as we follow the students. But particularly to our, from our kindergarten last year, teachers to our first grade teachers, really making tremendous gains with such a large class of students with varied needs as well. Our math scores?
Patty, can I?
Yeah.
On the columns, I don't remember seeing it like this before where it says three or more grade levels below, two grade levels. Has it always been like that?
Yeah, so now that we're using iReady, that's how they report out their data. And it's grade level, whereas we used to have NW and YA, which we reported out on percentiles. The difference with the iReady, which is really so much more helpful for teachers, is that it's criterion referenced. So that means it's the standards, learning standards are tied to reading and mathematics in each grade level. This assessment assesses every question that the student answers against the learning standard. So when the teachers get the printout, they can see exactly the standards students have met mastery on or not, as how they performed on the assessment. So it's really drilling down that data. So that's why they're saying one grade level below. Now, we also can, you know, we click in a different view what the teachers have to see that percentile data. So certainly that's that national norm, how our students doing compared nationally where other third or fourth graders are at this time of year. That's a good question.
I know you said folks have had a long day, so if you do want to head out early, that's fine. I think someone would vouch for you that you've been here, so. Is that you want to tell all that? You can stay if you want, but.
Learn, learn to take, learn to take yes for a yes.
Give a note, Tim. Okay.
Doesn't mean nothing. I did want to ask about, so I understand that winter term obviously isn't where we'd expect to see the full on grade level necessarily. Is there any concern about, and 40% being at grade level or above is great? Are we concerned about the 60% one grade level below? I mean, it's winter.
Oh, in first grade.
It's winter in first grade.
Right, so when it says one grade level below, it, what that means is even where we're looking at our six, of course, we're always concerned, we want to see that number. But I will say that particular grade level, we are seeing a more variety of learning needs in that particular grade level for students. And the trajectory is what we're looking at, again, not perfection or progress. So to know that they started with 80% of the students one grade level below, to go to 60%, that's progress. And as iReady says, every student, they receive two growth targets. The typical growth target, what we want to see our students make in here is typical growth by June. The students are also assigned a stretch growth. It's not attainable for all students, but that's, that's where we're looking toward, right? That stretch growth. And they talk, they do talk about in their research, there are white papers that they write as well and share with districts, is that students who are two grade levels below, you're not going to catch two grade levels in one year. However, if we catch it with interventions early enough at first grade, we are hopeful by first grade, seventh grader and 34th grade are at grade level, or at least are at the beginning of grade level. That is the goal and the hope. Because what happens if we don't close these gaps, they get wider. Then our students come to middle school and the gaps are incredibly wide. And we're really trying to double work and double team and increase interventions for our students. So if we can do that at the younger grade levels, that's our goal.
The standards are, by the end of the year, they should.
Yeah.
They might be exactly where they're supposed to be, but if they haven't learned a certain skill or standard, they're still going to show it. They haven't learned yet. Right, right.
Okay, so shall I move to math?
Sure.
So in our math, again, I'm going to speak to that trajectory of our students making progress. Yes, first grade, but even if I look at first grade for our kids two grade levels below to go from 10% to 5%, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for that progress that our students are making. And if I look to early on grade level to start with 4% and to jump to 15, that's wonderful. You know, so we're making gains in grade one. I feel like fifth grade and mathematics in particular, to go from 14% to 31% is very impressive. Questions for math? And next we move to the middle school. So here's reading data. We look at our current sixth grade class, that was our fifth grade class last year, our highest scores in the New Hampshire set. They're continuing to, to do well in sixth grade. We're continuing to work with middle school teachers. We're starting to have more conversation in English language arts about commonalities and developing a scope and sequence and how we can provide more enrichment for our students who are above grade level and what that looks like.
So eighth grade is interesting.
Yeah, eighth grade is stagnant. That would be the one grade level that popped up to us as well. I don't have a specific answer for you for eighth grade. But, you know, just working and looking at like testing environment and also the students, their time on their personalized instruction, because that's directly tied to the diagnostic, to really pinpoint specific skills and concepts for students where they're working with individualized. So I'm hopeful in the spring that we see progress for grade eight. And then math. Do you see progress? Incremental progress, I guess, in all three grades. I guess I would say grade six and eight and math in particular are showing some, some great progress. And then the last few slides that I have, I wanted to share with you our nation's report card. So NAEP, the acronym, is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, and that is our nation's report card that is administered to students every other year. And it's typically random and typically the school will get to the letter of like, you've been selected to administer the NAEP assessment. And Bedford, Amherst, and here, Nessie, we're all as toasted. We're all written and selected. But I wanted to share with you this slide because it's, it's really interesting. And then I have another slide compared the nation to the state of New Hampshire. So for the nation, you can see reading and math. The average score increased in math in grade four, but we don't really see a significant change in grade eight. The average score has declined in reading at both grades. But really, there was no significant change from both states in both subjects and grades. And they did report lower percentages of students who were absent five or more days in both subjects and grades, the assessment. The next slide is a breakdown, looking at the state of New Hampshire, and this is for reading. So you have grade four on the left and grade eight on the right. The, the yellowish gold color is New Hampshire and the blue is the national report card. So you can see the slides here in both reading for grade four and eight, that the state of New Hampshire is outperforming the NAEP, the nation results or national results.
Would be interesting if we could.
Actually, I try it somehow in my head. I want to say was Massachusetts number two, the Doge, D O G, Department, like that was one, Massachusetts two, I think New Hampshire was five. I want to say Florida maybe was three, Connecticut and New Hampshire.
One of the interesting things, and I think sometimes we lose sight of this because New Hampshire actually is a very high performing state academically against international standards. And often, if you took New Hampshire and said, it's between us as our own separate country, we'd be one of the top performing countries in the world. We'd be up there with Singapore and because New Hampshire students do tend to do quite well on standardized testing. And so it's, it's important to remind us of that because even if we're not at the top of the state of New Hampshire, we're still in a region that is very high performing. And so that's why some of these national numbers can be very informative.
Yes, and then here's the math. So for grades four and eight, once again, New Hampshire is outperforming the nation. And then I thought I would share this quote with you. So from Martin West, he's an academic dean at Harvard Graduate School of Education. So he says, NAEP's newest data suggests that New Hampshire has reached a turning point in its academic journey since the pandemic. He said, student achievement remains stronger than the national average across all four tests. And while there is still much work to be done to return to pre-pandemic levels, the trends and the latest results are both encouraging and hopeful. So I thought that was kind of nice that New Hampshire was, you know, really selected as well, doing something, right, post-pandemic. And then I thought I would just offer to you, you know, one of the biggest terms we heard following the pandemic was loss of teaching and learning. And so how do we address learning loss in our students? So we know our Department of Education has done a very nice job in terms of supporting districts around the state with various programs and significant professional development. One of that, we know nationally, the reading wars and the science of reading, you know, has finally set, needs to be explicit in our instruction with our students and for learning how to read. And our teachers, thankfully, Newmarket was actually onto the science of reading long before, and they've always prescribed to that. We have many of our teachers taking advantage of the letters training, which is directly correlated in support of the science of reading and really important field and hand methodologies and how we specifically explicitly teach the sounds, letters in our students' reading. Our K two, actually, it's not even K two, it's actually K five, we have fifth grade teachers also taking the letters training. And they're really coming away with learning so many new strategies to implement in their instruction. And then of course, we've purchased a new literacy program, K five, for consistency. We have reading and math labs at N E S. We purchased that iReady personalized instruction to support our test administration. Just signed on with Conmigo, so the state of New Hampshire, the Department of Education, excuse me, has signed through June of 2020, sets a partnership, a free partnership with Conmigo that's available to all states. So what districts need to do is then to reach out to Conmigo, which I did, myself and Debbie Sigmund, our tech coordinator, we had a meeting, we then received our contract. So now Conmigo is, is available for our teachers, grades five through 12, and our students. So Deb is now calling around to the schools and sharing that platform with our teachers. So that's been really exciting. So that's been really exciting. We have Andy with his new schedule, as you know, has implemented learning labs at the high school. We have a What I Need blog at both N E S and the middle school. We're excited about Discovery Education. I have a meeting on the books after February break. Casey from Discovery Education, Deb Segman, our tech coordinator, has already met with her. Discovery Education also has some really great resources to support our students and teachers that go free right now through the end of the year. So we'll see if the department is able to extend that contract. And then, of course, continuing to develop our multi-tiered system of support structure at both the elementary, middle, and high school. It all lends to addressing, how do we support all of our students and their learning?
What strikes me, if we go back to the New Hampshire versus national comparisons in math and reading. What strikes me, it's great that we're above the national average. And I understand from the pandemic, clearly there was a decline, it happened everywhere. Do you know if we kind of mirror the drop off from twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen that was seen in New Hampshire locally to New Hampshire and even nationally? How do we mirror that kind of drop off in schools?
So when you're saying, and you can see.
So if you look at twenty thirteen in reading, twenty fifteen, then you can see it starts dropping before the pandemic. And even it's more noticeable, I think, in math.
Right, so post-pandemic, that, that, that learning loss, right? So after the.
But there was a decline before the pandemic.
Oh, before.
What appears to be a decline before the pandemic.
There was, but in New Hampshire, is that, because it was two sixty if I'm looking grade eight in reading.
So I'm just wondering if locally we match that decline? So it went from two fifty-three to just two forty-five to two thirty-nine, which is obviously pandemic.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see it in twenty nineteen.
We can certainly look.
Yeah, we can absolutely look into that, but I don't have that answer.
It's just interesting, but nationally, it seems to be a decline, particularly more striking than New Hampshire. Maybe we mirror that, maybe we don't.
Certainly, the pandemic exacerbated a lot of things, but there were a number of issues that had already begun to present themselves pre-pandemic. And a number of schools were already beginning to delve into the pandemic, create more of a crisis mode that should push things along.
I guess I would add, as I know when I was a principal at that time, we were talking about landscapes, classroom landscapes changing significantly. And what I mean by that is behavior. We were seeing behaviors in our classrooms all through, and we couldn't really speak to it except for we were helping to support, what does self-regulation mean? How do I identify my emotions in the classroom? How do I self-regulate? And we were just seeing more and more students who are not identified under IDEA or 504. And we were developing, that's when you start to see more B C B As. Like, for example, when I was principal, I had built a My School Board for B C B A for regular education, not special education, because teachers needed help. They needed help in managing their classrooms so that they couldn't provide instruction. And so, and this is just me, from like being an educator in that time, in a school principal, that we saw, like Todd said, before the pandemic, classroom landscapes were changing. And being equipped with tools and strategies and helping to support our classroom teachers with these changes in their classroom that were pretty significant and that impacts learning. And so when we talk about programming, when you think about programming from twenty fifteen, right, twenty eighteen, you didn't see probably in twenty fifteen, social workers in school. You didn't see B C B As in school. You may not have seen a full-time sociologist in school, that now you might see two-skill sociologists. Full-time social workers we're seeing everywhere. So I would just speak to all of those things, it's going to impact learning and it's going to impact how our students across the country, it's not just New Hampshire, are performing.
And maybe a drop in seven points isn't really that significant when you're looking at, you're up at two seventy-five, you know, and maybe it's just a cycle that happens over and over, and I don't know, it just struck me, but seems to stand out a little bit in chart.
I also think that the trend continued over gradual decline for a few many years. So I think, as I think.
And then the pandemic hit, and now we all know the social learning aspect in schools is an area that we're all trying to address and support our students.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you for giving the technological questions that we have there, Patty.
All right, next up, we have twenty-four, twenty-five superintendent, goals and evaluation. We've talked about this several meetings that we, that changed our, our policy to review, give feedback prior to the election in March. So what we do this meeting is Todd can kind of go over the goals he presented to us and his, I'd say improvements, but the changes that have occurred about the last few months. And then we'll save any, because I don't want to save any none, any questions for non-public?
I was going to run through.
Hit it.
Yeah, so just to give you, I attached to the documents that you have from there. You have the original goals that we established last summer. Just to refresh your memory what those goals were, you know, working to define, develop a multi-tiered system of support for pre-K through twelve. So that's kind of not just my goal, the whole district's goal. In fact, I do want to emphasize, I don't do a whole lot by myself, you know, so, you know, it's rarely something that I will accomplish if Patty hasn't been involved in, Jenna hasn't been involved in, you know, the building administrators, all the teachers and so forth. So I just want to put that up there.
You also do all our school board goals too, so.
So, so, so anyway, so one of the goals is then to develop and really implement and get going a multi-tiered system of support. That's one. Second goal, really broadly promoting collaborative, student-centered school cultures, valuing teachers, students and parent community voice. And there's a lot of elements to that that I'll talk about in just a second. And then third goal, about, you know, developing and implementing a twenty-five, twenty-six budget process and really going through that. So I just kind of run through, those are the goals. And then just to give you some updates, with the M T S S goal, there's been a lot that's going on with it, and you've heard Patty talk about it at great length, and you've heard multiple times during the year, principals referencing it and so forth. A lot of work has been done across the district. We have a district-level team now that meets regularly. They're going through a process of sort of a self-reflection evaluation, kind of tease out strengths, weaknesses of what we're doing. There's a district-level team that's trying to coordinate the effort across the district. Each building has a, a team that is kind of spearheading it. There are regular data meetings with teachers in various configurations, whether it's grade level teams or subject areas at the, at the high school level, but there's regular conversations about data. So the structure is there. I think there's significant room for us to keep growing. You know, you'll, you'll hear, as we head into next year, some talks about tweaking master schedules to create more opportunities for students to have access to the supports they need. I'm actually excited to see Patty's creativity around utilizing Title I funds, being able to kind of move things around. And so we're actually able to get an interventionist for math, working with our middle school kids, which we acknowledge was an area of weakness, so very exciting there. But again, the structure's there, we are regularly coordinating and trying to get to a place where when we're having conversations about data, there's some consistency to it. So that's broadly what we've accomplished there. The second goal around the collaborative culture and so forth, I mean, there's a lot of things, I would, I would, one of the big things that I feel very proud of is the work we did around contract negotiations. And I really do believe we've created some real significant opportunities for teacher voice to really start to play a more significant role, kind of making some positive changes in the schools. So that, that is definitely happening all over the place. We're having conversations around our vision for graduate and around our mission, vision, values at the junior, senior high school. Both schools have fully developed growth plans or school improvement plans. They both have what we call like a guiding coalition of teachers who are sort of facilitating it and working. We've had a great consultant working with the district, got him John Ganderell, who's been helping to sort of move us along. Because once you identify what your goals are, you need to figure out action strategies, and there's a lot of really great stuff happening there. So I think teachers are starting to feel a sense of voice in, in that. I would say there's a trade-off when you start to really encourage more teacher voice. It can create a sense of overwhelmingness amongst teachers, like, are you kidding me? We've got another committee? You know, that kind of a feeling, and we certainly want to figure out how we can engage our staffs. It's a small staff, no matter how you slice it, and it's often the same people coming to the table to do these things, but there's a lot of good stuff happening there. Anyways, that's goal number two. Goal number three, I feel very, very proud of the work we did around budget development this year. I mean, coming in, you know, one nine seven, in a really challenging budgetary climate, we're able to really develop a really good budget that I think is going to be able to do what we need to do. And again, placing that alongside the new teacher contract, I think there's a lot of positive that is gained there. You know, one of the things that we, we talked about, you know, going back to, really, my first day here is like, how do we sort of shift the culture to create a more collaborative environment and getting people to really be invested in things? And I do think the work around the teacher contract, I, you know, it obviously has to pass, has to go into plan, but I think it really is a game-changing sort of structure that I hope is really going to bring more teachers to the table. You know, we're already talking about how, once, once the contract passes, to be able to launch, you know, new expectations and really talk about that with staffs across the district. It helps with those things and positive change. So yeah, that's just a quick, you know, overview of what has been done. Obviously, like I said, nothing I do is me. I mean, we, everything's collaborative. We think that's part of what we're trying to do, to create a culture where people recognize that not only one person has all the wisdom and being open to, to working together, find the best way to do it. And we're, we're starting to really start to see some positive stuff.
Thank you. Is there any area folks would like to expand on? Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Head into, we all believe donations, we've generous donation from the N C N P for Artisan Residence, for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you very much to the N C N P. Heading to approval of the, could you skip over an item? The school board member. Oh, my goodness, I did, because I used the ones from my, sorry about that, thank you. One of these days, I want me to get this job right. Yeah, sorry, for the new school board member orientation, Todd and I were talking that when the new members come on, it might be useful to have a sit-down with them, with superintendent and chair at the time, and kind of just go over the, the new member material we have, but we thought it would be useful also to get feedback from you folks and if they don't think we should add to that, perhaps particularly Lonnie, if there's anything lacking in the initiation in the new member orientation documentation that, that we can add. So if you do think of anything, please let us know, bring it back to the next meeting, whatever you want to do.
It's probably worth noting that we have, after today, we only have two more meetings with the current board. And then the new, then after the election, obviously, that's one would be, it's not that far off that we'll be needing to orient new board members.
Two seats, it's not anywhere, I couldn't find it on, mine, anything. Is it advertised yet?
It's in the PowerPoint that I shared at the deliberative sessions, there are five candidates. So Chris Hawkins is running for town moderator. Carrie Littlefield is running again for town. And F. Russo is running for treasurer. And then we have two candidates for the two vacant seats. We have, Dan, please help me pronounce the name correctly.
Kathy.
Oh, God. Paul's bending, thank you. Kathy, Paul's bending, goes by Kathy. She's running for one seat, and then Jeffrey Boyd is running for the other seat.
Just a quick clarification, that Chris and Terry are running for school district moderator and school district clerk. As you know, is, they're probably also running for town, so any town moderator.
Actually, town isn't up this year. Interestingly, they have a different election cycle, so next year, I promised Chris that we'll try to align more closely with the town, so it won't be a one-year seat. And Terry. All right, with that, I'd seek a motion to approve the January twenty-third public and non-public minutes.
So moved.
Second. Did we cause the relations? We did, very good. I do rate them. I'm looking like Dan, a second by Phil. Is there any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. All ready to manifest? I move that we approve the manifest in the total of one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred fifty dollars and ninety-five cents. Second. Motion is second by Dan. Discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, with that, we are heading into non-public session. I'm going to ask them to go into non-public session, I should say. So I seek a motion to non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one, A two, C. We have student matter to discuss, evaluation superintendent to discuss, as well as the personnel matter to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Amy, by roll call vote. Lonny Stevens.
Aye.
Carrie Swanson, aye. Amy Tilton.
Aye.
Dan Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
That, we are in non-public session at six forty-four P M.